Today is Monday, February 6, 2023. It's a little after 5:00 because we had a swearing-in ceremony for Nick Pelzinski, our Fifth World Ward Councilperson, who has sworn in and ready to work on the budget tonight, as well as other things. So, we're going to start on tomorrow night's consent agenda items, and this will be a presentation for our new brand guidelines. For that, we welcome our Assistant City Administrator Jeff Ryder and Manager of Communications, Angie Sharp. You two have the floor. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Really quickly, we just want to provide you some quick information on the brand guidelines policy and request a resolution ratifying the Assistant City Administrator's implementation of the policy to support those brand guidelines. We've been working pretty intently here for the last probably six months on these, and as a show of support, we'd certainly appreciate that resolution. I'm going to turn it over to Angie to talk very briefly about what we're looking at in the brand guidelines.
Thank you. And Jay, I do have a presentation if you'd like to throw it up on the screen. Thank you. Your Honor and council members, when you think of the Bettendorf brand, a lot of you think of this, our logo, right? But it's much, much more than that. It's more than just 10 letters with, "Is that Iowa?", when you turn your head this way and get a neck cramp, the swooshes that are fancy. I like the swooshes. It's more than just a premier tagline. It's about we as the city and how we present ourselves visually and creatively, how we express our vision, our mission, and our core beliefs, and that is the goal of our brand guidelines. From the PowerPoint template that literally this is designed on, to the cover photo of our brand guidelines, which you see on the left side of the screen, we are enhancing the look, feel, and essence of the Bettendorf brand. And on the right side, you'll see proof of that, that this is about much more than just a logo. This is a 50-page document that is broken up into several sections to help us have a strong and unique and consistent brand. So we have sections such as Brand Voice, which we described as four words: knowledgeable, approachable, friendly, and welcoming. We break down our visual identity, which includes how to use the logo correctly, the specific dark blue that you see, and the light blue color codes, our approved fonts, special photography styles, and brand-new graphic elements that we are already starting to put to use. So here are some examples of what we've done so far in print. We've worked with our finance department to create the popular annual financial report, the city's first ever, I believe. We have created a brand-new cover for the downtown master plan, also utilizing a beautiful picture from our drone and our drone pilot, Jay Foster, on our communications team. And on the lower right-hand side, you'll see some examples of the postcards and stickers that are about as we speak, being sent to residents who are impacted by the garbage and recycling route changes that take place in the beginning of April. We are also starting to use these brand guidelines on our digital platforms as well. Everything from LinkedIn, that's the image you'll see on the top left, promoting a job opening that we had, friendly reminders about how to use your garbage can and recycling can lids, promoting the wonderful experiences and amenities we have across our city, the Palmer Hills Golf Shop, our popular spring soccer league, frozen landing with the frozen forecast. And of course, whenever we're able to, we always like to show off our stunningly beautiful bridge. So these are just some of the ways that we are already streamlining our brand. We are also centralizing it, though, as well. At the beginning of this year, we counted 36 different social media accounts citywide, many of which were not used since 2020. Five weeks into this year, we're down to 29 accounts with plans to centralize even more. So tomorrow, we ask that you approve these brand guidelines, and then our rollout plan will begin with the goal of implementing these on July 1st. Thank you.
And just in closing, Your Honor, I would just like to say that in addition to what we're working on in print and digitally, we're going to be working with the finance department and all of the staffs. There's a number of signage elements throughout town. You've seen our monument signs. There's a number of other identity elements on our buildings and around our grounds that we're going to be updating as well. So this is a very robust effort, and then also, it's an effort that's going to take all of us. So we had hoped to get this to you two weeks ago. We worked with a couple of our departments to really make sure everything is solidified, and that's why we're very confident tonight. We have a document that reflects the goals and intentions of all of our departments, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question about TikTok. We included TikTok in here, and I know that, you know, the federal government, the state government are banning that.
Yes, that's correct. We did include TikTok. We also put a very lengthy note about TikTok in there. We consulted our IT staff, our counselor as well, on this subject matter, and we thought it was important to identify TikTok as a social platform. And with the guidance of Monty and our IT department, not necessarily shutting down anything we do, but certainly notating that we're not going to start anything new in the realm of TikTok. But as Monty put it, we should adopt more of a wait-and-see approach with what the federal government does to suggest how TikTok will play out. I believe it's his opinion that TikTok is going to organically take its own course, and the federal government will address that. So we're going to take a wait-and-see approach, but certainly not start any new TikTok accounts for the city of Bettendorf over the course of this year.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jeff, is there any chance? I know around town, as I travel, I see a number of the park signs that are starting to get pretty worn and about ready to fall over and things like that. I understand that where you have land and water money, you have to, guidelines to go by, but the ones that don't have to follow those guidelines, will we use the branding to replace those signs in the future?
Our goal is to brand as best we can everywhere, and I'm certain we'll work with Brian and Jason Manful. On any structural issues with signage, that's certainly something we want to make sure that's above the board. But as there's opportunities to update and rebrand our signage, we're certainly going to do so. I think Brian's team did a great job, was it two years ago, in really giving them a fresh look and putting the city of Bettendorf logo over the old city logo and bringing those up to speed. So we'll continue to work with them. They're obviously at the entrance of every park, so we want to make sure that they are in good working order, so we will definitely, definitely work on that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions for the team? Then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on consent tomorrow as item E. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take it up on consent tomorrow night. Let's move to consent M. And for that, we welcome our community development director, Mark Hunt. Mr. Hunt, welcome. How are you? You still have a voice, that's good. Of course, you're not the lead singer.
Or a singer. I'm not allowed to sing.
He's not allowed to sing.
Well, I see the lip moving back there while you play the guitar every once in a while, but I see, okay.
They took my microphone away. You might choose to do someday yourself.
No, no. Enlighten us.
I could just have a minute to grab my presentation. I was not, with the festivities earlier, I was not able to preload it, but it is just right here. One second, if you will. (pause) We'll get right into it here. So before us, for your consideration is case 23-005. This is FG Holdings Development Site Development Plan. There are two associated replats with it. They're very minor in nature. I'm going to ask that you kind of keep it at a high-level view, because if you try and track all the little incremental changes that have come as this practice has come through, it almost gets, you lose the forest for the trees, to borrow an expression. So I will do my best to try and clarify. I want to spend a little bit of time on this slide, because I think it does a good job of talking about what's actually happening here. We have a color-coded map that shows, highlighted in light green, FG80 Second Edition lots. There's some new lot numbering. The overall borders haven't changed, just the interior lot numerings have changed. And we're going to spend a lot of time tonight talking about three, and hopefully not a lot of time, but sometime tonight, talking about lots three and four, because they have a site development plan that is changing slightly, but needs your approval. I will also note that within today's packet, there is a replat for FG80 Third Edition. What that does, and it makes a lot of sense, it puts all the lots on what I call the island, this area, all in one plat, which just kind of makes sense. So everything on the island's in one plat, everything north of the island is in one separate plat. Really, that's not that big of a deal, just some common sense things. We worked on some easements and stuff with the developer as well. So that's the, that's the ground in front of you. That's, that's the battle plan, and we want to look at lots three and four to modify a site development plan, if you will. Nothing is changing with the uses, so we're going to bring you a golf venue and ballfields. The ballfields are on that Lot 4, and the golf venue is on that kind of L-shaped Lot 3. This is Zone C3, it's general business, and there's a future land use of community commercial, so everything aligns. These uses are aligned and allowed. This is the old site development plan. At first, you might not notice a huge difference, but I'm going to ask that you pay attention to the parking area. I think they're going to do a lot better job with handling parking and getting parking near these ballfields, so you don't have a lot of people traversing fields or other facilities. So this is the old one. The new one, which I'll show you in a second, will do a better job with parking. It's also going to shrink slightly the size of the golf venue and the size of the concession stand. When I say shrink it, I mean the building. The actual driving range is the same size. And when they do that, they also take out some seating and service area, which reduces their parking burden. So they take down their parking requirement, which is really important. It actually gives us another lot or two to develop and have some development on it and raise property values. Here's the new plan. So we bring some parking to the north. We locate it more efficiently next to the ballfields. We reduced slightly. It's not going to be perceivable at this scale, the build-out of the golf facility and the concession stand, but also inside their rearranged space, so they don't have as much seating, so they don't need as much parking, much service area. I think this is probably the best graphic. I think it really shows how things are going to work out. So you see in yellow our parking. That's going to serve golf and baseball. And you've got some lots colored in purple. Those lots will share parking with the golf and baseball venue as well when they're developed. Remember, we're really only talking about the site development plan for the golf facility and the ballfields, but the potential for cross-easement parking here is important. So we do bring our parking down to 861 spaces. Remember, parking based on straight calculation, if you just pulled the code out, was over like 1,200 spaces. We were creating a sea of parking that we knew we didn't need from our experience at TBK. We went through the Board of Adjustment. We were able to reduce that parking down, and we got a judgment from the Board to allow that, and we think that this new site plan honors that Board of Adjustment opinion. You may have noted, this was a late addition to today's council packet. So here's your, your landscape plan updated for these two new lots. We actually get more trees than we were going to get before. I think previously, they were calculating, calculating around 75 trees, and you're going to get about 82 trees now, tree factors. So nicely landscaped lots, lots of trees to go in, and I think it's going to look really good and provide the, a view for both the patrons and the passerbyers that will be quite attractive. I did that about as fast as I could, and there's a lot of moving parts to this one, so I'm happy to go back. But really, we just made some minor changes to parking and the size of the buildings.
Any questions for Mark? Jerry?
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I have two questions. First question is that entrance to the parking, what's called employee parking, I guess, off of Forest Grove, I'm concerned that, that's pretty close to the traffic circle, and all of a sudden, somebody's going to want to stoplight there a few years down the road, and I don't think we want to stoplight there. Why doesn't that park, why doesn't that road go into, go over to Competition Drive as opposed to onto Forest Grove?
I guess that was at the, at the design of the developer. We, we didn't see a problem with it here. You're quite a ways from the divider, and this is really only used by, by employees. It's not for public entrance. So this is just a service drive and employee parking.
Well, that's true, but the parking down there in Lot 1 connects to it.
It, it does have a connection to it, but that's not going to be, that's not going to be used. That's not going to be accessible to those people. Again, this, this drive is only for employee and service entry.
Then I guess I would suggest if it's not going to be used, don't put it in.
Yeah.
Because if you put it in, somebody will use it. My second question is, being the building at, at the golf facility is smaller, did they reduce the number of, of, what should I say, places in it?
Hitting bays?
Hitting bays, exactly.
No, the hitting bays stay the same.
Hitting bays stay the same.
It's more the restaurant, arcade, seating, that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Bill?
And this is not specifically for Mark, but probably Jeff and Decker, too. We've had multiple replats here and changes, multiple site development plan changes. Does any of this change any of the layout, the descriptors, the definitions in the development agreement?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, it doesn't affect us to my perspective. Jeff and Chris have looked at this. It doesn't change any of their responsibilities under the agreement. It's merely trying to get more efficient as they examine the opportunity for the, the additional hotel and the additional parking for, to really give every bit of their parking opportunity to the entire venue. And we see their experience with understanding how efficient they maybe weren't quite as in the first, and what they've learned from the first side, how to maximize that, and what they've heard from their patrons, this just maximizes all of that.
And if I could add, it's a, it's a good question, Bill, and I think it kind of goes to Jerry's question as well, is, is this changing what, what the developer agreed to do in exchange for what the city has agreed to do? And the answer is, is it's not. This is, as Mark has done a good job of saying, it's the parking of this, of this area is a very unique, it's a, it's a very unique parking layout with a very unique array of amenities, and so that's what this is primarily intending to do, and it doesn't affect the obligations under the DA.
Okay, I'm glad the staff is cross-referencing all of these changes with the development agreement as they come forward. Thank you.
Jeff, did you have anything to add?
I would echo what Decker and Chris stated. I would just also add that point of ingress egress that Councilmember Sacksor referenced as well. It was added in addition to this for the purpose of helping with public safety access. That easternmost entry point, as Mark had stated, was not for commercial or public consumption, but it also provides a more expeditious approach for public safety vehicles to get to those backfields. So while it's not shown on the map a true road, at the end of that point of ingress egress, at the end of that road up by the ballfields, there is actually, for lack of a better term, frontage access for safety vehicles to meander around those ballfields in the event that there was an emergency, where an ambulance or something along the lines had to get to a, a ballfield specifically to provide service to someone in distress. And then to Councilmember Connors' point, yes, every, everything has been itemized. From a commercial perspective, we're getting more property area to develop, and all of the obligations that we are bound to and the developer are bound to have been met.
Thank you. Any other questions? Craig?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a ballpark, how much smaller is, is the driving restaurant and whatever is getting smaller?
14%.
Okay.
Not significant. Not significant. It was really just to get rid of a lot of dead space and service area they didn't really need that was forcing them to park more than they needed to park.
Jeff? I'm sorry, Your Honor. Just for frame of reference as well, while this is, while this is reducing by 14%, the developer did notate that this golf amenity, the building structure, will actually still be larger than the top golf facility that you see in Naperville. So facility-wise, shrunk by 14%, but still very comparable to a top golf that you would see in the Chicagoland.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as item M. So moved, second. Any other discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow night. Are there any other remaining consent agenda items any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Questions or comments? Bill?
Jeff, is there a comprehensive bid list and list of responsibilities for that downtown landscaping maintenance program?
I see the... Sorry, Councilmember Connors, let me check with Brian here really quick.
Okay, either one of you, whoever wants to answer that.
As far as the bid list itself, we were going to be doing the City Hall area, all the downtown planters and the downtown parking lots at 15th Street and 18th Street.
So I guess my question is, do we have a plan, or we entertain plans that they develop and give to us throughout the bidding process? As to what things are going to look like, what they're going to plant, what they're going to do?
How often they'll be there to maintain?
Yeah, right.
What should we expect?
We did put regular maintenance requirements in the bid packet. The landscaping, we have put in there a far more perennial style of development to mitigate the amount of maintenance necessary, so they will be adhering to the design standards we give them. The majority of the areas that are in this, these bid documents are already built out or planted, but we are going to rely heavily on perennial development as opposed to annual development, just for the, the maintenance costs. But it'll be in response to what we put in the bid and what we asked them to do. They will not be providing us landscape plans.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Jerry?
So a follow-up to that, then, they will not be allowed to tear up existing plants just to reduce their maintenance?
No.
That is not the intent, no.
I know it's not the intent, but, but as long as it's in the document to require that.
Right. The goal of this is to consolidate a lot of our contracts that are currently à la carte through a number of different vendors, and we found that many of our contracts, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, were at the end of their lifecycle. For example, the, the City Hall Plaza and the Jetty Park, we were at the end of our three-year maintenance life with that contract. So we tried to consolidate for efficiencies and to keep a better handle on the contractors that we have and consolidate these into singular agreements as opposed to à la carte.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is this going to include watering the plants once they're in?
It does.
Anything else on that particular item? How about any other items on the consent agenda? Any particular council member would like to discuss or maybe ask a question about at this time? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion that all items on our consent agenda be, remain there and be reviewed tomorrow night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have set our consent agenda for tomorrow night. Please take a look at the operational items for tomorrow night, if you haven't already, and if there's any council member who has a discussion or question on the items that will be brought to you on the regular council agenda, now's the time. All right. Any items to be added today by council? I have none. Let's move into our presentation on the 2023-2024 budget. For that, we welcome our Finance Director, Jason Schatt, whose group has done all the work, and our City Administrator, Decker Plain, who's here to take some of the credit.
I'm afraid to take all the credit, Brian.
Welcome, gentlemen. I know that you have been thrown a curveball, and you're looking at an 0-2 count with another curveball that sounds like coming your direction, so what are you doing? Walk us through it.
So thank you for the sleepless night, Your Honor. We appreciate that.
Well, I didn't do it.
First, let's thank Jason, his team, and the department head team for putting this all together, and then Calissa and...
Hi, Calissa, thanks for being here.
Julie's in the audience.
Hi, Julie.
For all the work that they did, and yes, to accent and accentuate the mayor's point, last Friday, and I believe this week, the Iowa Legislature is going to pass now, it's House File 120, which will take the rollback away from a number that we were given in October because of an error in calculation at the state level, and it will reduce what was about 2.1 million or 2.2 million total, everything everywhere, down to about 1.1 million. And Jason will walk us through that. But it effectively takes us to the budget we have today with a 54% rollback and, and almost freezes it, basically, to where we're at today. The unfortunate part about that is, that doesn't allow us for really any growth that we kind of thought we had. And we also know, based on introduction of new Senate study bills last week, that the legislature's not done. So as we talk to you tonight, and probably more importantly, on Saturday, we're going to try to position you based on now what we've seen last Thursday, and know that this is a really fast-moving set of cycles, to try to position ourselves for what we, what we know now and what we might learn later in the week, to try to position us as best we can. Right now, that would say that we probably have, our current service levels are fine, but we won't see any additions to this budget unless you likely have to raise the levy, and we'll talk about that on Saturday. What we don't know is what's ahead of us in the next 60 days. The Senate study bill that now is House File 120 does give us an additional 30 days from our current deadlines, so I think we'll go to April 30th, and we're probably going to want to take advantage of that if we can, so that we can keep an eye on all of these changes and be able to try to react to some of those.
Would you suggest changing Saturday or stay with Saturday, possibly add another?
I think we stay with Saturday, and I think we could probably cover it either in a different Saturday or a Monday work session if we need to, because we're really only talking, I think, about...
There's two or three things that may come down the pipe. Really, one of them's the worst.
Yep, and we're working those as best we can with other administrators, mayors, finance directors throughout the state to try to see what the state's going to do, but the signals are not, they're not good for cities based on what we're hearing, so, and I suspect that's true of school boards and counties at the same time. I think we're all going to get a reduced tax opportunity over, over the period of time. So with that, Jason's done the bulk of the work. I may turn into the color commentator while he's doing the play-by-play, so we'll just let him get at it, and we're going to explain the budget that we prepared very briefly, set it up with the budget that we now probably know, so we'll show you the difference, but you'll be moving towards the one we now know. But we want to just show the audience what we, what we had in our hands and what's gone away, so they can understand, you know, the things that...
We intended to do.
We were going to do.
Because of growth and not raising the tax levy.
And we were not going to raise the levy.
Of course.
We'll talk about that. So I'll give it to the very capable Finance Director, Jason Schatt.
Thank you. I would just note that this is the first budget presentation put together under the guidance of the new brand guidelines that were presented earlier, so...
Wow.
Hopefully, we are on-brand throughout.
This is the right color of blue.
It is.
Okay.
Jeff would not know, he's colorblind.
He's running...
That's why we put him in charge of it.
Love it.
Tonight, I would usually, we would usually be presenting not a finished budget, but one that had a little bit of polish on it for you all, and I always like to add a little bit of a theme to that discussion. So while the budget may not be quite as polished as we would like at this point, I think the theme this year is be nimble, and we have been over the last couple of weeks. But due to the strong financial position of the city and the careful financial planning of the council, Bettendorf in particular, has flexibility to respond to these types of challenges that a lot of cities around the state don't. Both versions of the budget are roughly about 116 million. Obviously, version 2 is going to be just slightly less than version 1, but 116 million is a good number. And like I said, I think this budget really demonstrates the city's flexibility in response to not only legislative changes, but also the inflation that everyone is feeling that's been running between 6% and 8% recently. As Decker mentioned, we have two versions of the budget, a requested and a revised. We've been talking about them internally in finance as V1 and V2. Both versions of the budget are built around maintaining the levy rate at 1265. Both versions of the budget take advantage of continued growth and property valuation that a lot of cities don't have. The requested budget, V1, adds requested positions in community development and library, also adds a position in sanitation. That particular position... That particular position can stay, as you know, it's funded through the enterprise fund. The revised budget, V2, endures legislative changes, uh, coupled with rising costs to maintain the status quo without a levy rate increase. So that's kind of the setting of the stage, if you will. The budget, both versions, fund, uh, city council priorities, including the list here. This is not an all inclusive list, but, uh, some of the top priorities from our goal setting workshop back in October, including city attorney support, comprehensive plan update, cybersecurity, Parks and Rec master plan, Veterans Memorial maintenance, sewer projects and rate direction, IT master plan, the ERP and financial software replacement, urban park development, and the quiet zones on the railroad.
Jason, if the proposed bill that would make a central corporate purpose out of cybersecurity does pass, would that change any of your plans for funding those cybersecurity things that are on the horizon?
At that point, Your Honor, we could come back to you and, and provide options for, uh, borrowing money for those initiatives.
Would that free up general fund money to do some of the things that you're not going to be able to do because of the change in the law relative to the rollback?
It could in a roundabout way, it'll likely free up sales tax money and gaming money that then we can repurpose somewhere that might-
That's where you were going to take it from, sales and gaming?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, sir.
As you know, the budget is driven by assessed values. This is a, this particular year is what I call a non-assessment year. Residential properties are reassessed every other year. This is the year, the off year for assessments. But despite that, our 100% assessed value increased 5%. This is pretty significant for a non-assessment year. Usually that number is between 2 and 3%. And the bulk of that, obviously, in a non-assessment year is due to new construction. Uh, we know that that's our bread and butter, and it has, uh, certainly helped, uh, throughout this process. As Decker mentioned, there has been a recalculation of the residential rollback. We fully expect the legislature to, the House to pass the bill that has already passed in the Senate, uh, that will reduce that rollback, which was 56.49 when it was first introduced to us in October. It'll go down to 54.65. That maneuver takes about $72 million of taxable value off the books, equating to about $912,000 of property tax and replacement revenue. The commercial rollback for this year remains at 90%, but there's a big caveat. The state has, over the last several years, funded a business property tax credit out of their own funds. Uh, they would like to make that, or they have, uh, made that credit now an additional rollback on commercial property. So the first 150,000 of every commercial property is taxed at the same rate as residential. So in this case, 54.65%. That maneuver, prior to the change in the residential rollback, uh, removed about 30 million in taxable value, equating to about $361,000 in FY '24. So that's in addition to the 912. We do anticipate a backfill here, um, but as you can see, I put three question marks after that one. But it is shown to have a backfill funded for the first few years.
This came in at the very end of the session last year. So there was not an opportunity to combat that. But, and because it was a backfill, like, always happens to us, well, there's a backfill. Yeah, and we all know what happens to the back. So just be aware of that. Yeah, Bill?
Had you known the correct rollback number back in September?
October.
Would there have been some things that you could have maneuvered in the budget that might be more favorable than the revised budget we're looking at today?
You know, unfortunately for, for my friends at the department head table, uh, new staff requests are usually always one of the first to go because those are, those are costs that stay in the budget and have to be funded year over year. I do have a couple of options that I'm sure we'll get into more depth on Saturday in a later slide that just kind of shows some of the ways we could move different funds around, um, and maybe, maybe fund some of these things. But I think Decker and I agree, going into this next year where we, we know the state is hoping to impact, not only valuation, but also our ability to respond to changes in valuation through the levy rates, might be the year to stand down anyway and kind of take that wait and see approach and see what we're left with next year.
I think there's a real strong belief, if I could characterize what I heard last week and what I think is being said to us, is that lowering taxes across the board should create growth. And while I think that's, that concept is novel, and I think in some cities, maybe that's true. But that's not true for all cities, because lots of cities are not going to grow regardless of lowering that tax. And so-
We don't need to create growth. It happens.
It's happening. So we're in a different place than a lot of other cities. But, um, so, um, I think it sounds good, but I think we all know that people just don't move to a community because you have low taxes. In fact, most people move there for the schools or the amenities or, you know.
Employment opportunity.
All those things that make up a community, it's just not low taxes. So, um, while I think the theory is great, you don't apply it universally.
Agreed.
On page five, I've got kind of a quick snapshot of, of how the change has impacted the budget. Uh, on the left, you'll see, uh, the requested budget at 56.49% rollback. On the right, the revised budget, 54.65. Originally in October, we thought we had a 7% increase in taxable value. That's a, that's a significant number, the biggest since, uh, FY 1112, if I remember correctly. That equated to 2.13 million in new taxes. Now, as you work down the page, you can see how that 2.13 million was, was to be spent. Uh, just about 173,000 on those new staff requests. Uh, just shy of 700,000 on cost of living adjustments and steps for existing staff. These are, uh, negotiated cost of living in the, the four year contract and the step increases in the, uh, in each union's pay scale. We funded about $270,000 of operating and equipment increases. Our health insurance is going up 79,000, liability up 93. And in debt service, we were going to, uh, receive about 822,000 in tax, property taxes to bolster that fund for a, a couple of future years. In total there, 2.13 million, that's how the new dollars were to be spent.
Talk to us about that debt service. Can we continue on the path we are with this revised? And still have payment capability for those new loans we took out, plus everything else that we have?
The short answer is yes, in the short term. I think we have implications in the outer years if, um, limitations on property value growth are put in place. Obviously, we've, we've had a plan in the debt service fund and, and we stick to it. And we issue debt within the, the means of what we think, uh, is coming down the pipeline. But, uh, this coupled with any additional, um, legislation and limits on property tax growth could have implications in the, you know, years four, five, six, and beyond.
Right now, you're at 3% allowable growth. And the question is whether or not they will drop that to two.
They, they're looking at it through a couple of different mechanisms.
Yeah, and that's one of them.
Yep.
Is to limit growth. So you, you can't, you wouldn't, for taxable value, you wouldn't be able to get as much, you just limit it. You're capped, you'd be capped in essence.
Yeah, even if the taxable value was raising at 10%, you can only capture at this point, three.
And that's one of the issues that has to be worked out is if you were to try to cap, let's say, the debt service levy. You, you can't affect existing debt we've all, we've all issued for bond issues that might have, either we issued by council authority or let's say by referendum. All that has to be, you, you just can't stop that. You have, you owe those, you owe those bondholders. So they'll have to be very careful how they do this. And there's, there's some indication they want to just consolidate all the levies into one or those levies into a couple so that cities can't move to those other levies. So this is going to be very delicate, um, trying to figure that all out and keep us all within our legal parameters of what we have already done in terms of outstanding debt, let's say.
On the right hand side, you'll see the differences in the revised budget. So again, that rollback's reduced to 54.65. That's still actually an increase over the current year. Today, we're at 54.13% in, on a residential rollback. So we do get a taxable value increase of 4%, but most of that, again, is new growth. I would say, and I haven't done the math just yet, uh, because we don't have certified values, but a good 80 or 90% is probably new construction, new properties in Bettendorf. Uh, the property tax dollars generated then are increased by 1.28 million over the current year rather than the 2.13. With that as new taxes, we can't do new staff. We're not fully funding the COLAs and steps out of property taxes. We'll have to do that with some of the general fund's other revenue sources. We've kind of taken out the operating and equipment requests or funded them with other sources. Health insurance will remain the same, liability insurance will remain the same. In debt service, um, we will obviously be paying the same principal and interest that we planned on paying. But we'll draw down that fund balance just a touch, uh, to do that. And, um, I'll show you how that looks here in a couple of slides.
Go ahead, Bill, Bill's got a quick question for you. Are you aware, has there been any discussion at the state level as to how much assessed valuations can go up every two years? They're thinking about limiting that too?
I think everything is on the table, Bill, they've talked about that, they've talked about capping growth. You know, one of the complaints is people are complaining that their property tax bills are too high. And we think they get confused with what assessed values are. Certainly those go up.
Yeah.
But they, most folks would be happy if they could sell their house at assessed value or better. In fact, I got my first ever call two years ago. Somebody was trying to sell their house and their assessed value went down and they said, hey, reverse that. I want that value to be higher, you know, it's, so when they're going to sell the house, they love the assessed value.
If people are complaining about property taxes, all they have to do is look to our neighbors across the river.
Well, I think the interesting thing is, and we've said this in Garrett, we said it to Gary and Scott and others, you know, I wanted to tell you this is my 33rd budget. In the 33 years that I've been doing this and all the public hearings, I remember one familiar face and now he's on the council. It's rare that you had anybody here to be upset about the budget. And, and they're right here and can talk to us. And I would just ask you all. Yeah, Richard's here.
Richard's here, he's been here before. Howdy, sir.
And you all have been on the council for all the collective years you have. How many calls did you get that? But most of the calls you get are, when are we going to fix this? When are we going to get that sewer in? When are we going to get that road in? When can we get those parks replaced? Those are the calls you're getting. It's not somebody saying, I don't want you to ever fix my street. I don't ever want you to fix my sewer, I'm okay with backing up. That's not what's happening.
Well, they also don't realize that this is a third of their, 40% of their-
Yeah.
Actual bit, property tax bill is schools more.
Schools and the county, yeah.
On to page six of the presentation, I've got a summary of the changes in the, the blue table, uh, that are in this revised budget. In the general fund, property tax and then replacement revenue. So that's outside of the taxes we levy, uh, but the state replaces, uh, utility taxes. We're down about $562,000. We have fixed that by removing those staff requests, the library and community development. Uh, we've taken some of the branding initiatives that were funded from the general fund and funded those with gaming revenue. Uh, we've taken some bond issuance costs that have been funded in the general fund and funded those with CIP money. Removing funding for emergency flood operations of $100,000 that we kind of keep in there just in case, as every few years, uh, we know the Mississippi River floods. And then we'll reduce the growth in the fund balance by about $159,000. On the debt service side, we're short about $349,000 and we'll, we'll just increase the, the reduction in that fund balance for this year. And you see, Your Honor, in parentheses, there are implications for that in the outer years where that debt service fund may possibly need a levy rate increase. Or, um, depending on how valuations come in, maybe it's just a one time transfer from another fund to get it through kind of a dip and then we're back on track. Other options, and I'll briefly talk about these, but I think this slide is kind of going to be the bulk of our conversation on Saturday. You could increase the general fund levy rate by up to 20 cents. 20 cents will, will backfill that $562,000. You could increase the debt service levy by up to 11 cents, that'll fix the 349,000. You could fund some one time budget request in the general fund with sales tax, gaming and grant funds. There's about $250,000 there. However, um, we will, while these are one time requests, we always have these requests in the general fund. So I don't want to get into a habit of funding those with these other funds. Otherwise, we'll, we'll run through those other funds quickly. We could move the sales tax rebate that's currently being received in the downtown fund to the general fund. That's about $78,000. That is our share of the sales tax, the baseball sales tax rebate that, um, TBK Bank is, uh, Sports Complex is receiving. That's what we have used that for, for several years now is to help with some of the downtown projects, like the landscaping and things like that. Increasing the rental license fees could generate up to $30,000. It doesn't put a real big dent in, in the, uh, the shortfall, but, um, it's something. And then obviously, you can always shift funding from other budgeted programs within the general fund. Those are much harder, uh, decisions to make.
Jason, am I opening this up right? Regardless of which one we're looking at, that public works position we were looking at, that's staying, correct?
It stays because you're funding it from the solid waste fund, you're not funding it from taxes.
Okay.
But you're increasing that, those funds to get it done.
That's correct.
Today, that can handle it. With the increase proposed.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Real quickly, I won't spend a lot of time on the next couple of slides. It's just some historical data on assessed and taxable values. Uh, you can see taxable in the darker blue, um, always kind of obviously lagging behind assessed and that's due to the rollbacks. But the note here is that over the past 10 years, valuation in Bettendorf has increased about 50%, which is, uh, pretty significant. And as we all know, I would say the majority of that increase is related to new construction. So new tax dollars mostly, as in most years, come from new construction. Um, the story here is taxable value by class. Uh, starting from the top down, the dark blue line is the residential property class. The lighter blue is commercial and the green at the bottom is multi-residential. Multi-residential was a new property class back in 1617. And then they decided to phase it out and, um, make it equivalent to residential. Prior to 1617, it was commercial, so the rollback would have been 90%. Now the rollback is, uh, 54.65%. So you see the dip, uh, down to zero on the green line is being made up for by the rather sharp increase of the dark blue line above it. And then commercial property value is actually down in total this year, mainly due to that, uh, tax credit rollback situation where the first 150,000 is now taxed at a, as a residential rollback.
And the green line is where the clerical, or the error occurred, is in that transition of that eight year, switch from multifamily to residential. Somewhere in there, that formula got missed and that's what the error is. Jerry?
So with, uh, multi-residential tax rates going, or taxes going down, do we anticipate that landlords are going to, uh, reduce their rental rates?
I think you answered your own question. But there was no requirement in the phase out of the law to make that happen. And I'm, I'm, based on what I know of current markets, I'm not hearing, um, any of those properties indicate that they're lowering their rents.
Jerry, I'll, I'll check with-
I'll check with the Easter buddy and let you know.
Thank you.
As you're all aware, the, the city's total levy rate, it's 1265 in the current year, uh, is made up of about six different components. And there's certain expenditures that are tied directly to, uh, some of those components. So the next, uh, several slides will kind of walk through the increases in those areas. Uh, the first being liability insurance. The city can levy, has a levy rate available to us to levy taxes to pay for our risk management, uh, charges, uh, including insurance and, and things of that nature. The liability insurance itself is expected to go up about 15% from 490 in the current year to 500, just shy of 564, uh, next year. Workers' compensation, on the other hand, will increase about 5% to 556,000. So in total, we're going up just about $100,000. So in total, we're going up just about a hundred thousand dollars, um, for liability insurance. Uh, an important note here is the mod factor is declining from point eight one to point seven eight. This is a measure of how risky an organization we are on a workers' compensation, uh, from a workers' compensation, uh, side of things. Um, so we are, uh, about three points less risky, uh, going into the new year than we are this year.
And, and I think that's a really important factor, given the number of police officers and firefighters that we've put on. You would think that that mod factor might change because those are much riskier clients, if you will, in that, in that base. But all the safety work we've been doing with IMWCA, with all the departments frankly, um, the, the, the work safety factors and the work with our, our employees, have, we have downsized our accidents, uh, and our exposures. Um, and we should commend those guys over there in the row who have done all that work to make that happen. And also there's, there's just, um, inflation in the overall numbers, um, with insurance across the board that's a major factor. So.
The levy rate necessary to pay for that insurance in the current year is twenty-six cents. Next year, um, at the, in the original budget, we, we were at twenty-eight cents. Uh, in the revised budget, it's gonna have to be twenty-nine cents. And I'll show you how those changes in these levies affects the total here in a moment. Um, the chart at the bottom shows, uh, claims, premiums and deductibles on the, the dark blue bar and is coupled with ending cash on the light blue line. We have about a million dollars in cash in this fund, which as you can see is right around a year worth of claims. Um, the fund was started thirty-some years ago at five hundred thousand. Um, so we feel pretty comfortable that a million dollars is a, is a good number, a good target to have in reserve here.
And Nick, we know you're drinking through a fire hose, so just bear with us. We'll, we'll get you acclimated.
Another, uh, expenditure of the city that has a levy rate associated with it is employee healthcare. We can levy taxes, uh, to pay for these costs as well. Uh, our health plan renewal is going up about seven percent. And that, that includes the insurance as well as the claims, um, from four point seven million to just over five million. Uh, participant contributions are also going up, as you know. Um, we have negotiated increases from participants in all four years of the four-year contract. We have some rebates and other revenue. So the total covered by the city, uh, just over four million in the current year, that required about a dollar four on the levy rate, is going up to just shy of four point three million next year. That'll ranges from either a dollar under the original rollback to a dollar three, uh, under the new rollback. So, um, I'll see how that affects.
Jason, what are the rebates and other revenue?
So we have, um, some pretty significant pharmacy rebates that makes up a lot of it. Um, we have, uh, it's not necessarily a rebate, but, uh, when an individual hits the spec, so we are, uh, self-funded up to the first ninety thousand dollars of expenditures on an individual. When they reach ninety thousand dollars and begin incurring expenses over and above that, we get reimbursed for those through our reinsurance. Um, so some of that revenue is in there. Um, it's just a little, kind of an anomaly, a little bit high this year.
The, it's a good thing on the, the reimbursement side. It's not a good thing for next year's claims.
Right.
So while it happens and it gives us a little bit of money, the claims will be figured on. If that person went over the spec and may kick you over the aggregate, now you're in the insurance categories and it could affect you. Typically, I would say that they expect about four or five people to hit your spec in a year. Um, and it just depends, if you hit a cancer or two, um, you can hit it pretty quick. We've been pretty lucky for a couple of years, but that's when the, the rebates come in. If you kick over that ninety, you'll get monies back from insurance into the, into the program, but it'll affect us next year.
Same.
Employee contributions goes down by percentage from about thirteen, sixteen to twelve seventy-two. So our contract doesn't talk percentages, it talks dollars, right?
We, actually, we did get.
I thought we were at percentages.
Um, I think the difference here is we have retirees who are on the plan and paying full freight are dropping off. So that's some of that number.
Okay.
Uh, on the revenue side.
Some will stay on the plan until they hit Medicare because they can retire early, but they, they don't have, they're not on Medicare yet.
Sure.
So this'll carry them for a couple of years. That's typically what happens.
Okay. They are, they're paying the full cost of the insurance.
Phil knows how that works.
Again.
But he does contribution today, so Bill's off the hook.
That's right. Thank you. But they do pay the full cost of whatever the total cost is.
Yeah. Um, and then you see the blue bar on the chart there, again, claims roughly three and a half million to four million over the last four years. And then the lines there representing target cash and ending cash. Uh, what we're aiming for here on the advice of our consultants is about six months of claims in cash. And you can see that the, um, the fund is performing at that level, um, going forward. We also.
And we typically have to have a hundred and twenty-five percent of the claims in the full fund.
Yep.
To fund those differences and we cover that.
Including, I think, cash and anticipated revenue in the fund.
Right. Thank you.
Um, we also levy a tax for the police and fire pension system. Um, the city's contribution rate will actually decrease from tw- twenty-three point nine in the current year to twenty-two point nine eight. Uh, the levy rate necessary will decrease from sixty-one cents in the current year to either fifty-nine cents or sixty cents, um, next year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And, and this is, this is really where the market drives down. I expect this number would go up in the next couple of years because we know what's going on in the marketplace now. That will affect future. We've been as, this is, I think, as low as we've ever been. Uh, when we started out the very first year, it was seventeen or eighteen percent.
Our minimum is nineteen.
Our minimum's nineteen.
Yeah.
And we've been as high as almost thirty-three percent. So it fluctuates between there. I, I only saw it at nineteen one time and that was when we started.
Yeah. And while we have added staff in, in police and fire, um, we've also gotten a little bit younger, a little bit, uh, less experienced and a little bit, uh, lower compensated, if that makes sense. Um, so that, that's all kind of contributing to this. And as you know, we can levy taxes within the general fund for transit funding. Um, that levy will decrease from sixteen cents in the current year to fifteen cents. This is a, a little bit artificially low, I would say, because of the expanded federal funding that remains, uh, and as I, I say here, will not last. We will finish out a couple of the CARES and ARPA grants here over the next two years. And then there is some remaining federal funding from those, those legislations, uh, that might get us through another year or two. Um, and then this levy rate may have to start, depending on valuation, of course, um, kind of ticking up towards the twenty cents that it used to be. And then finally, uh, outside of the general fund levy itself, the last remaining levy to talk about here is the debt service fund levy. Um, this covers principal and interest payments on, um, our general CIP projects, streets, traffic signals, uh, things of that nature, things that are not funded through the road use fund, not funded through the enterprise funds, um, but funded with debt nonetheless. So we have, uh, principal and interest payments of fourteen point eight million dollars next year, uh, outstanding debt at the end of that year within the debt service fund only. So that debt funded by this levy rate, about a hundred and twenty-six million. That's fifty-one point seven six percent of the debt limit imposed by the state and requires that we keep the levy rate at four eighty-five. Uh, the chart below shows outstanding debt, um, within the debt service fund, so matching those numbers above, and the debt limit used, which are both on the decline over the next several year, years. I do have a note there at the bottom, um, total outstanding debt. So when you include everything outside of the debt service fund, uh, we have a little bit of TIFT debt, we have a little bit of, uh, obviously debt within the utilities, the sanitary sewer, storm sewer. Um, all debt put together is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars at the end of the current fiscal year.
Hundred forty-seven million.
Yeah. Boy, if it was.
Well, I'd love a hundred forty-seven thousand. You'd write the check tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll just finish that.
I'd say to him, adios, we did a great job.
After a while, all the numbers kind of run together, right? So, uh, those components, along with the general fund levy, all add up to twelve sixty-five. On this chart, I would normally be showing you the current year versus the budget year, but, uh, there, there just wasn't room and as you know, it's twelve sixty-five anyway, so, um, what does it matter? Instead, I'm showing what the levy rates would have been under budget, the requested budget, uh, V one, and now will be under the revised budget, V two. Um, I'm gonna come back to the general fund. I wanna talk about the others first. As we, we already talked about health insurance. We need a, a fixed amount of dollars there, so that requires an increase of one, two, one oh three rather than a dollar. And in liability insurance, again, this, we need the fixed amount of dollars, but to get that based on the new valuation, we need a penny more, twenty-nine cents. Police and fire is sixty cents, transit is fifteen, debt service stays at four eighty-five. So to remain at twelve sixty-five, that leaves five seventy-three for the general fund, which is a nickel shy of where we were, um, under the original rollback. Um, the difference in dollars to the general fund is that five hundred and sixty-two thousand that we've already talked about. Uh, the other levies, other than the debt service levy, are not affected because we've maneuvered those. Um, so the debt service levy is, uh, down three hundred and forty-nine, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the total there being nine hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, I've been rounding up and saying nine hundred and twelve, so if you've heard me say that, that's where the number comes from. However, um, under current Iowa law, we have plenty of capacity under the eight-ten, uh, general fund levy limit, uh, at five seventy-three. Uh, that equates to about six and a half million dollars of property taxes that we could go get but are not asking for today. There's a couple of other levies we don't take advantage of, um, or haven't taken full advantage of. And again, some of these are, are being considered to be eliminated and some of the legislation coming our way, but, uh, in total, under current law, uh, the city has about eleven million dollars of taxes that we could go get, uh, but again, are not asking for today and have not recommended an ask in the budget. So we like to talk about the three levers that make up a residence tax bill. Um, this first, I have, I've broken this up over two slides this year, uh, one to show you the impact of that first rollback and one to show you the impact after the change. Um, the mean value, the, the average home in Bettendorf has increased to two hundred and seventy-two, seven twenty-three. It's up from about two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars last year. It's an off-assessment year, so while the average has gone up, that's been due to new construction, right? But most homes have not actually changed in value from last year. So zero impact on the tax bill from the change in value. The cha, the rollback, again, in October, uh, went up from fifty-four point one three to fifty-six point four nine. That would have added eighty-one dollars to this average homes tax bill. Uh, we, or we are recommending no che, late change in the levy rate. I need a drink or something. Uh, so there's no effect there. Uh, so in total, uh, the tax bill on that average home would go up eighty-one dollars or four and a half percent. On the flip side, the commercial taxpayer in an average assessed value commercial property of just about one million twenty-eight thousand is gonna get a break. Uh, we don't have a change on assessed value, but, uh, the, the change in the rollback due to that one hun, that first one hundred and fifty thousand now being treated differently will reduce the, this, uh, commercial property's taxes by about six hundred and thirty-six dollars or five point four percent. Um, and again, like everybody and, uh, everyone is, everyone has the same complaint, we're all facing rising costs due to inflation of six percent to eight percent. So you can see how even, even at the original rollback, uh, things may not have been a, we been meeting at the demand for expenditures. In all, one point one million of the two point, uh, one million or roughly fifty percent of new tax revenue under this scenario, and again, I think this is out the window now, so don't, don't spend too much time here, but, uh, was from new construction, which is, um, like I said before, our bread and butter. Now, the rollback has changed, taxable value has been reduced, uh, so that two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar home, uh, will pay eighteen dollars more in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four than they are in the current year. That's just up one percent. And because the rollback, uh, that residential rollback is now applied to the first one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the commercial side, uh, they get an even better tax break of six hundred and seventy-one or, or minus six percent on the commercial side. So, uh, a pretty significant change when you think about, um, the fact that we have, you know, thirteen thousand homes around town, so, um, eighty-one to eighteen. And I want you to, we've been looking ahead at fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for most of the night. To provide some perspective, let's look at the current year, FY twenty-two, twenty-three. We know what the taxes are in all of these other districts, uh, in the current year. So this is the, uh, mean assessed value on residential and commercial, uh, in tax, taxing districts around the Quad Cities. So at the top, you've got Bettendorf, city of Bettendorf, Bettendorf schools. The total tax rate, uh, is thirty-two nineteen. Again, we are only twelve sixty-five of that, about a third. So your, your taxes, full taxes on that home, four thousand five ninety-six, uh, and then twenty-nine thousand seven ninety-three on that average commercial property. If you're in the PV school district, the rate is just a touch higher, thirty-three twenty-seven. So the, the tax dollars are just a touch higher for each, um, class of property there. But then as you work your way down the page, you'll see what the same property value, uh, would pay in Davenport, uh, Moline and Rock Island. So Davenport's five thousand six sixty on an, on that two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar home. Moline, over eight thousand dollars and Rock Island, over nine thousand dollars on those homes. So, um, we're, we're offering a pretty good value, I think, uh, for the services provided. Again, this is current year, um, but you can see the levy rates as we compare around the state. This is the twenty comparable cities of populations twenty-four thousand and up. I've sorted this by that last column on the right, the general fund levy, just to illustrate how few of us there are that are not at the eight-ten maximum general fund levy. Um, but if you look at the, the third column in from the right, FY twenty-two, twenty-three, total levy, you'll see how those total levies change. Um, and we're at twelve sixty-five, the average is about fourteen forty-one for the total city levy there.
I think that's an important point to make. Nick, we talked about that eight-ten, that's the maximum any city can levy, then they move to their emergency levy. And it really is mixed across the state, how people utilize the other levies. But some people don't have transit, so they don't use a transit levy. Um, some, you know, everybody's got trust and agency, everybody's generally got tort. But this is just what we know based on looking at what we look at. And most you can see are the growth cities that have the opportunity to be less than or university cities.
So how does all this affect the general fund? And what are we doing in the general fund? This chart is actually based on version one, the requested budget, the original rollback, but it really doesn't change a whole lot. Um, the expenditures go down just slightly, the blue bars. Um, the percentages remain just about the same, about twenty-five, twenty-six percent going forward. Um, but what I wanted to kind of just achieve here is a lot of information in one chart. So as I said, you can see the expenditures there, uh, between thirty-two and thirty-five million, uh, over the next several years. In FY twenty-three, twenty-four, I have kind of a spike in expenditures and a dip in fund balance. As you know, for the last, oh, three, probably three years, we've been carrying some excess fund balance in the general fund, up around that thirty-five percent of expenditures. Um, and we think a good use of that in, in the current environment and with current projects coming our way would be to, uh, use that excess fund balance and provide a loan to the Splash Landing Replacement Project. Uh, we have four million dollars coming to us from SCRA, but it's coming in over twelve years. Unfortunately, uh, residents would not be happy if we took twelve years to build a new pool, so we need to cash flow that four million upfront. Um, so the recommendation here is to take some of the excess fund balance in the general fund, make a loan to the Splash. fund, make a loan to the Splash Landing Project, and then pay the general fund back as the SCRA money comes in. We did look at um, possibly borrowing uh, to do that, but uh, with this cash on hand and, and interest rates where they are, I think this is a prudent move. And it keeps us within our fund balance policy of twenty to twenty-five percent um, going forward as well. Moving into the utility funds, where we'll have some discussion around uh, rates and rate increases, uh, starting off with the sanitary sewer fund. Questions? Sorry.
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, trying to cram as much as I can onto one chart, so the blue bars going across the page are um, where we see the rates going. Uh, we're at three sixty-nine today, uh, we'll recommend the fifteen cent increase to three eighty-four, that'll be, that'll go into effect uh, in April, but really not affect any bills until after July one. That's a four percent increase, so we've been doing four percent increases for several years now. After that increase and starting next year, uh, that in, the percentage increase will have to increase to about five point six five, five point seven percent, and that's in line with the sewer rate study that we had done last spring, and it's related specifically to uh, the Spencer Creek Lift Station Project out to the northeast and the I and I um, repair work that we had to do on our existing system. There's about thirty million dollars of projects that are in the, in the uh, on the horizon, I should say, and we'll need that, need that funding. So you can see what the rate is doing at that level going forward. The lines on the chart, uh, starting from the bottom, the green line is operating income. Uh, the light blue line is our target cash reserve, what, the kind of cash that we would like to have on hand in this fund just to sustain operations. And then the dark blue line is ending cash. So what we're trying to do here is set rates to achieve a net income, the green line, sufficient enough to fund the operations of the utility, but also maintain our debt service payments and our obligations at the wastewater treatment plant. And then we're trying to get those two blue lines to be as close together as possible, so we don't have excess cash or too little cash within the fund. So that's kind of the, the two drivers of the rate.
Are, are we looking seriously at sewer connection rates? Or we could go with those?
We are.
I mean, across the board, not just residential?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some notes that we can kind of work through on Saturday.
All right, thank you.
Similar story in the solid waste fund. The only difference being the solid waste fund doesn't have any debt to serve, so you can kind of withstand a lower operating income here, um, as long as you're covering depreciation, so you can pay for those uh, equipment replacements down the road. So what we're hoping to do here is break even from an operating income standpoint, but keep those two cash lines uh, again, as close as possible together so that we have the cash available to us when we need to, like over the next three years, we'll be replacing the whole fleet of garbage and recycling packers. So we have to have the cash on hand to, to get that done. And in order to do that, the fee uh, will need to increase. The bar, the blue bar here represents a sixty-five gallon cart. You'll remember, we've done five percent increases uh, for many, many years. Last year, uh, we said, you know what, let's take a year off. We didn't do a fee increase in the, the solid waste fund last year affecting the current fiscal year. Going forward, we showed three percent fee increases here, so less of an impact than what we have been doing, um, but uh, and then we've also given them, given that break in the current year on the rate.
And the only variable here, as you can imagine, is gonna be the price of new vehicles, which have spiked everywhere, so if those go up radically, we might have to have a slight increase here to start to cover that. And depreciation on those vehicles is about six years, I think, aren't they, Brian? And, and we find that sweet spot to be about right. After six, they start to nickel and dime us, if we get above eight, it just starts to almost kill us. Um, we like to get rid of them if we can. We don't know that we aren't gonna go to eight just by virtue of what the market's doing, cause they're telling us, you're probably two years out before you can get them. So um, this is gonna be an interesting time relative to costs and relative to the market, both.
I told you you should have bought them two years ago.
I know you did. I remember that. I remember that.
Maybe I didn't. Maybe it was the exact opposite, but I didn't know this was coming.
I think it was in one of our dreams. We weren't in the same dream.
Moving on to the stormwater utility fund, again, very similar story. Uh, we want an, uh, an operating income sufficient enough to pay for operations, debt service, and make those capital replacements. Uh, and then ideally, the rate is increasing uh, to achieve that and get the, the cash on hand as close to the target cash reserve as we can. Um, so you can see the rates there going uh, from five forty in the current year, will make an increase of twenty cents up to five sixty um, this April effective for July one. And then after that, the, the rate of increase slows down to just ten cents for the next few years, and even five cents in that last year. I think I've told you for a couple of years now, like, I, I really believe six dollars is the sweet spot here where this fund starts to be able to fund itself without debt, a lot like the solid waste fund. Don't quote me on that in five years, but I think that's where we're headed. Okay, so add everything up, the changes in taxes, the changes in fees, how does it impact that average home that we've been talking about, that mean value, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar home, and there's a lot of them around town? Normally, when I've shown you this table, the first, or the second column is residential, the third column is commercial, I've had to split it up over two slides, uh, because we've got two versions of the budget. Uh, so this is all impact on a, on that residential property, just according to the two different versions, so uh, going across the page, cities portion of property taxes under the first version would go up eighty-one dollars, we saw that. Under the second version would be just shy of eighteen. Sewer fees, stormwater fees, and solid waste fees are all going up the same in both budgets. Uh, thirteen, twenty in sewer, that's per year, two dollars and forty cents per year for the stormwater fee, and six dollars and thirty-six cents per year on solid waste. In total, under budget V one, the total increase on that home would be a hundred and three dollars or eight sixty-two per month, uh, annual cost of services going up about four point two percent. Under the second version of the budget, which again, we believe is the, is the budget that you all will be adopting, um, the total of uh, the tax increase and the fee increases is just shy of forty dollars a year or three dollars a month. Uh, total cost of those services going up just one point six percent in an environment where the costs in these funds is obviously going up uh, to much greater degree than one point six percent. On the commercial side, um, again, only change here really is in that first row, the property taxes, they're gonna, they were getting a six hundred and thirty-six dollar tax break uh, over the current year in the first version of the budget, that increases a bit to about six hundred and seventy-one in, in the uh, the second version of the budget. Total cost of services going down somewhere between four point three and four point five percent, depending on what budget we're looking at. Now, if I take the property taxes paid by the average home, the utility rates paid by the average user, uh, and we, we take those same numbers and, and put them down in one of these twenty, or twenty other cities of twenty-four thousand or more.
Which is a new chart, we used to do.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, so we did thirty-eight cities. We got this to be more realistic with, probably closer to where we really are.
You can see how we compare uh, across, across the board, and I think being in that lower third maybe is where we are, and, and if you look, the differences between everybody there is pretty minimal. Total cost of services, this is the current year, obviously, we don't know what their costs will be next year just yet, but uh, in City of Bettendorf, two thousand four forty-seven, that includes your property taxes, your sanitary sewer fees, your solid waste fees, and your stormwater fee in that two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar home. Uh, pretty, pretty favorable compared to the average, and certainly favorable compared to those at the right side of the chart that are taking a much, uh, asking a much bigger portion from their residents there.
Council Bluffs and Clayton don't have a stormwater fee?
No, it is part of, to my knowledge, the sewer fee.
They run it in their sanitary sewer.
Yeah.
Okay. That, there's nuances in every one of those, so if you look at Urbandale, I believe, and we'll check it tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, why they're so much lower, they buy fire services from the surrounding cities, so they don't have the same fire infrastructure in terms of people, um, cause they're totally, pretty much totally surrounded, and they buy those services. So I think they have a, um, maybe a ten-man department compared to what we have. I'll have to ask Steve to make sure I'm right, but they have a much smaller department and buy services, so they look a little less, Dubuque's got their own casino and move money in from the gaming. So everybody's got kind of a nuance as to why those numbers differ.
On the, the next side slide, page twenty-five, we know, we've known for several years, uh, in Bettendorf, we do have one of the higher debt service levies around the state, and that's uh, was done strategically to finance aggressive CIP plans and get a lot of infrastructure completed and done um, over the last several years. So if you remove that from the equation, take the debt levy from each of these cities away, and only look at the operating levies and the fees and the utilities, um, we rank as number one among the group, um, at one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. I don't do this to, you know, twist this to statistics, other than to say, I think it's an indicator of just how lean we operate, how efficiently we operate, uh, because we're not asking as much as our neighbors to cover our day-to-day work, um, while we might be asking for a little more from, from them to uh, to put in streets and sewers and things of that nature, so. I usually have the stamp on here that says lean operations, but I, I was out of room.
Couldn't get it the right color.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to stick to these colors, you know? Major projects, uh, you're all well aware of these, we've talked, talked to, to them a lot, uh, as we went through the, the bond sale over the last couple of months, uh, but you can see construction season twenty-twenty-three, this is a lot of the stuff that will start going on and up around town, obviously, the big thing being Splash Landing Replacement. I wouldn't expect to spend all nineteen million in twenty-twenty-three, obviously, some of that'll leak into twenty-twenty-four, but um, wanted to represent the whole project there. Forest Grove Road, fourteen million, and as you know, a huge portion of that is actually federal aid. Um, the city's portion is um, quite a bit less than fourteen million, but we will be writing checks for that amount, um, and they, as they progress through that project.
Is that still about eighty-twenty, or since we've added a bunch of stuff, it's probably gone down in percentage?
This does include some of the projects that fall outside of the.
Roundabouts, the changes that we've made.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Street resurfacing, twenty-third street, that Spencer Creek Lift Station we'll get started on in sewer, uh, also do the Hopewell Sewer Extension in sewer. Parks and Playground Shelters has a, has a really strong budget for the year, so um, there, we're not taking our foot off the gas as, when it comes to CIP.
How much, how much longer for the alley program?
We're still probably.
About five, six years out.
Yeah.
About five or six years out. We'll have all the uh, asphalt ones probably done in about three years, and then we're going back in and, and uh, a lot of it is just milling overlay, uh, the existing concrete ones after we do full depth patching.
Better than forty years like it was.
Yeah.
Right. Well, you also gotta think though, too, some of the projects that we, the alleys that we currently are doing, we're also adding some sanitary work or storm sewer work to them, which lessens the amount that we, if we were just strictly just, you know, just doing the alley itself, the pavement.
But you gotta tear it, tour it up anyway, so it knows we'll do it right.
Yes. Before I move off the CIP, I should go back to Splash Land, I didn't mention, that's a public-private partnership um, with the YMCA, so nineteen million doesn't represent the city's obligation to that project, that is the total cost of the project that we are sharing with the YMCA and, and have some other fundraising partners involved. Roughly, uh, a third of the cost of the project will fall on the city for that, um, that one.
And I know some of you got uh, a question from a resident, why Moline's doing their expansion at six million and we're at eighteen million, um, and we've got some response, so we'll be able to give that to you tomorrow, but you know, we're, we're uh, we're knocking everything down, they're gonna use an existing site, um, we've got new driveways, we've got new infrastructure, we've got new buildings that are three times the size of what they were, the lazy river's two hundred feet longer, the pool is twenty-five percent bigger than that pool, there's a variety of reasons for it that are, we can explain, but we just thought we'd tell you, we know some of you got a, um, a question today about difference in cost between the two facilities.
Page twenty-seven, legislation we've got our eyes on, obviously, that first one, SF one eighty-one has passed the senate, it's now, uh, I think it's HF one twenty in the.
Yeah, it's HF, it's not a study bill anymore.
That's the one that reduces this rollback that we've talked so much about tonight. I, I feel like a broken record, so if you'll indulge me, I'm just gonna skip that one. Uh, it does extend the budget adoption deadline from May, March thirty-first to April thirtieth. Um, we kind of touched on it at the top, I would, I'd say we proceed with our meeting on Saturday, uh, get the big pieces in place, and then see what else comes down the pipeline at us and, and take advantage of that extra time to maybe come up with a response if we need to. Um, so we may slow down the budget calendar just a touch, um, but um, we'll, we'll stay on schedule for this week. SF forty-six modifies the definition of the central corporate purpose to include those cybersecurity purposes that the mayor mentioned earlier. I'm in favor of that one. Now, SSB eleven twenty-four and eleven twenty-five, eleven twenty-four eliminates some levies, uh, so far, none of the levies that the City of Bettendorf uses. It limits valuation uh, and growth in valuation to two and a half percent, but gives you the flexibility to change your levy rate to get up to three point two-five percent as long as you're under eight-ten, so we, we have some flexibility there, but my, my worry about this particular attempt is not only are they re, limiting valuation growth, but also limiting your ability to respond to it uh, through the levy. Uh, also reduces limits on general corporate purpose bonds, uh, so right now, we can issue seven hundred thousand dollar general corporate purpose bonds without going to referendum. Uh, that number would be reduced to, is it three ninety or four ninety?
Four ninety.
Four hundred ninety thousand, um, so obviously, put some limits on what we can do in things like parks and things like that.
There's also a bill that was aimed at increasing it from seven hundred to one point four.
Yeah. I can't imagine there, that one's going forward if, I don't know.
Okay.
SSB eleven twenty-five uh, is getting a lot of uh, accolades for increasing the sales tax rate and the local distributions, uh, our sales tax revenue would go up under this bill, uh, but then uh, what they're not telling you, or not, not saying as loudly, is it reduces the commercial rollback from ninety percent to eighty percent, that would wipe out any increase in sales tax. Uh, alters tax credits such as the homestead credit, uh, again, they're taking a credit funded by the state and now making it more like a rollback, so they would, today, uh, homeowners can get a credit on four thousand eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of value, that would change to a uh, exemption of the first ten thousand dollars of value on a home, so that, there's a pretty big impact to us on a property tax revenue standpoint from that one. And it does the same with a few other um, credits, military, senior, things of that nature. And while they're reducing our ability to raise revenue, there is a bill that would expand uh, police and fire pension benefits, certainly increasing our costs over the long run. And then finally, HF forty-two is an exciting one for us, it's Entertainment District Certax, it would give cities the ability to kind of draw a loop around a certain location and impose a entertainment district tax on economic activity within that location. It'd function a lot like a local option sales tax, but only uh, within a certain geography, say, for example, the sports complex area.
Except it's less than seventy-five acres, so hopefully that gets changed.
Yeah, we, we, we had good dialogue on that.
I know.
And we talked about potentially making it the same size as the urban renewal area.
It didn't get changed in the, in the wording yet.
No, you're, you're right.
Say that again.
That doesn't come, that doesn't happen often.
Pretty natural for you to, you're right, I don't get this at home, so I need it here.
That's what we're keeping our eyes on today. Uh, that's what we're keeping our eyes on today. And obviously, there's new, new bills and new draft bills coming out all the time. Um, but I would expect that growth in taxable value next year will be reduced. And our options to respond to it may be further limited if any of these uh, bills go forward. And then finally, we've talked a little bit about it, the budget calendar. Um, we'll stick with our Saturday budget workshop this coming Saturday, February eleventh. I had originally planned to start the um, the hearing process on February twenty first, but if uh, we are allowed until April thirtieth, we may move that out to March twenty first. That gives us an extra thirty days to kind of analyze what's coming from Des Moines and, and really fine tune this budget. Um, so we would wrap up then, rather than on March twenty first, we'd wrap up on April eighteenth in order to meet that deadline. That is everything I have for tonight. Uh, looking forward to our more in-depth discussion Saturday.
Your full book is here with everything everywhere. Jason or Decker while we're here? We're gonna have plenty of time on Saturday to answer questions, so if you wanna read your books and bring them with you Saturday, we'd love that, wouldn't we, Jason?
Feel free to reach out all week as, as things come up.
And I, I would suspect, Your Honor, well, we'll, we'll certainly have breakfast for you.
Yes.
We'll make a game time decision whether or not we need lunch. Uh, because I don't know that we need, unless council members have really specific questions on all the detail, which they certainly could ask us, we wouldn't anticipate we would need the whole four, four hours. Would probably be, um, four hours would probably be plenty.
Okay. And if there are specific questions, especially if this goes through this week and you know you've got an elongated timeframe to file, you might schedule another session, even if it's a work session on a Monday night, for instance, later, because those specific questions may be irrelevant, depending on what happens and what changes get made to the budget.
And as you know, even
Certainly input would be welcome, but
Even if we went till April thirtieth, we don't see them adjourning before that, but we would hope.
Well, the decision will be made by then.
It should be.
This week.
Well, I, that, that's on HF, HF one twenty.
You're talking about other changes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
One twenty four, one twenty five, I think those are coming up next. And I'm hoping that if they're gonna do that to us, that they'll do that inside the timeframe to have all the publications.
Um, cuz if they don't, then they're gonna push our budgets back or
Absolutely, it'll be very difficult at that point.
Why make changes during a budget year? Why not just make them effective the next budget?
That's what we were hoping for, so.
Then you have time to plan. Any other questions or thoughts on the budget? Thank you very much for a great presentation. Thank you to department heads and everybody in the finance uh, department, great job. Unless, uh, unless there's anything else at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Still moved. Second.
All right, we stand adjourned, good work, people. Thanks again, Jason and crew.